Clay County Board of Commissioners, meeting Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. I guess I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda with addition.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve with the two additions.
Okay, there's a meeting Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
They're watching the lines when we're meeting.
When I watch, I have to use headphones and then mute it on the computer.
We've got a motion by Jenny and a second by Grant.
Mr. Chair, we'll need to roll call again today.
Okay.
Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross, is there a way that when you're not voting, if you could mute your computers or phones, we're getting some feedback? So I'll start roll call. Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye. Motion passed for approval of the agenda. Do we have any citizens to be heard today?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Can I have a motion for the approval of the bills and vouchers?
I'll move.
Got a move by, motion by Grant, seconded by Jenny for the approval of the bills and vouchers. We're going to have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye. Motion passes to approve the bills and vouchers. Now we're going to have the COVID-19 update from Public Health Director.
Jim, did we do the minutes from October 20th?
Oh, did I miss that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We do have a motion for the approval of the minutes from October 20th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Grant, second by Jenny.
Jenny.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye. Minutes are approved. Bills and vouchers is up extra. Did we vote on that already?
We got that.
Okay. Now we're to the COVID-19 update with Public Health Director Kathy McKay and staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I did hand out the weekly data sheet that we provide. It is showing our positive cases in Clay County, 2,712. We have 46 deaths. Currently hospitalized is 12 from Clay County that are hospitalized and three that are currently in ICU. Our 14-day case rate per 10,000 is 82.96, so that has increased since our last 14-day case rate. And the numbers of, show you the trends on the second page where it shows the number of deaths. There's a little discrepancy. There's 46 deaths, but it only shows 45 in the last page as of October 28th because we had another death in Clay County. So, and then 496 active cases still. On the third page, it has the same information. Minnesota positive cases are 153,620, that's cumulative, and the cumulative deaths are The cumulative positivity rate was 5.3, however, the last seven-day positivity rate for Minnesota is 8.1%. And then you see the confirmed positive cases in the United States over the 9,234, 856 deaths, and then globally, the 46 million. You'll see on the last page, we also added the Cass County data. As I had talked about last week, there's 1,371 active cases in Cass County. They have 87 deaths. Their total cases is 10,160 in there. Cumulative positivity rate has increased as well. It continues to rise, and that's 15.25%. Their 14-day case rate per 10,000, as you can see, is increasing, 111.40. And then the collection date of October 19th through November is 137.56, so their numbers are continually on the rise. The Commissioner of Health had reported yesterday that we're still seeing increased cases. They're not necessarily linked to specific causes, but we're really seeing more community socialization, and then the transmission is coming from that is the majority of the cases. So it's really all over our communities. Her takeaway was that Minnesota is still in a bad spot, and we really expect that this is going to continue, particularly in the next months where it's, we see the temperatures drop again eventually, and we're going to see more people inside their homes, so less people outside. We just expect that the cases are going to increase, and we also have some major holidays coming up, so we expect that there's going to be more spread in that regard as people still want to get together in large groups. So, any questions on some of the data I just presented?
Kathy, my question is, right now, there's about 1,867 active cases in the Clay and Cass metro counties. And when we had 20 cases in Clay County in April and 40 cases in April, we really pumped the brakes in terms of what was in our control to help control the virus. And certainly, I'm not advocating for closure of anything beyond our control, but what is Minnesota Department of Health advising counties and courthouses to do more of?
Well, and, you know, we still are in a locked, I mean, our door is open, but we have security at the Family Service Center building, also security at the courthouse, so we're only having limited customers into our buildings. So that was one, certainly one of their big recommendations. Also to, as we look at what is the spread, what are we seeing? It's, the majority are in community social activities, so we're not seeing the majority of that happening in the workplace. So that's also a factor. Still continuing to talk about masking, social distancing, that 15 minutes or less over a 24-hour period. So all of those measures are still in place. So just to continue to monitor that, that's their recommendation right now. We also are working with schools and higher ed, and their questions are also similar to when do we shut down and do total remote learning? And so we're working with the schools and the Minnesota Department of Health epidemiologists to determine a lot of the factors for schools at least is, is the spread happening in the schools, or is it mostly what we're seeing socially? And at this point, as our last meeting, most of the cases were from social gatherings, so the schools were technically still a safe place for those kids to be and for their staff to be. So when we see a significant uptick in numbers of spread in our facilities, I think that's where we take a hard look, and we're watching those numbers all the time. But currently, right now, with the limited number of appointments that we're seeing face-to-face in all of our departments, that's really the recommendation, is try to avoid the face-to-face contact as much as possible. So we are doing that, of course, in public health, and I know social services as well, and many other departments are limiting only what is absolutely necessary. So that's the recommendation right now. And then we'll just be working with them on a weekly basis with our epidemiologists from the Minnesota Department of Health to make further recommendations for us.
And I, you know, and I appreciate that. There still is 25% that's unknown or missing as to what the likely exposure is. And so, yes, there is social spread happening.
Mm-hmm.
But there's also a quarter we don't know about.
Right, exactly, yep. And when we anticipate it's going to get worse, so we're not going to see an improvement is what they are stating, Minnesota Department of Health and the Commissioner of Health, because they know that, again, the season that we're in, we also have influenza right around the corner, so we're anticipating it to be significantly worse with two viruses circulating and potentially no COVID vaccine in the next month or two that will be able to get out to the public. So that's the concern, and so the caution to everyone is really the masking and then staying away from large crowds, large gatherings of 10 or less is recommended right now, and continue to do your hand hygiene and just stay home when you're sick. If you have any symptoms, we really recommend you stay home. And then, of course, Jamie, I'll get into the testing piece as well, and some of the information she'll share is common questions that we continue to hear as people are confused about what they should do if they're symptomatic or not symptomatic, et cetera, so.
I have one final, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
At, in terms of staff and keeping staff safe, I know we've had some staff exposures, and is it the policy now to encourage, are there any more people we can encourage to work remotely? And then my second question is, at what point do we require the majority of our face-to-face meetings to happen virtually?
And our policy still is the remote work, if you can do that in every department, and I know that we've talked about that in county management as well, that the policy hasn't changed about encouraging and actually advising remote work. There's some people that cannot do that because they would have no work to do remotely, but for the majority of people, that is still our recommendation.
Thanks.
Does that answer that, Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie?
Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about testing. Last Wednesday, the Minnesota Department of Health provided some guidance on home testing. And so, as you are aware, we have a saliva testing site in Moorhead, but our, some of our neighboring counties have the ability to have an at-home saliva test. And the comment from the Minnesota Department of Health is, "At-home saliva testing will soon be available to all Minnesotans." And so that is the push. Right now, Otter Tail County, Becker County have the ability to order a home saliva test kit. The focus on community spread is really about, we need to be testing, and we need to quickly isolate and quarantine people. So that is the effort that's happening right now. Just to give you a little bit of information on what happened at our saliva testing site last week, the week of October 25th, we tested 2,875 people. The week before, there was over 1,000. And the overall positivity rate at that site continues to run an average above 20%. And there's roughly an even number between Minnesota, people from Minnesota and North Dakota being tested. So it continues to go very well, and we're thankful for having that as an opportunity. For people that, I just want to talk a little bit again about isolation, quarantine, contacts, and to clear up any confusion over that. Anyone who has symptoms, and symptoms can be so vague, people will say, you know, "I thought I had a cold," you know, "I just minor kinds of things," but anyone who has symptoms should stay home and get tested because we have the ability to have testing available to us. If you've tested, if you were tested before, excuse me, if you were tested because you were in contact with someone who has COVID and you do not have symptoms, you still need to remain quarantined for 14 days. You can be tested, however, you still need to remain home for 14 days. And there's some confusion about that. Basically, in order to know what we are dealing with, because there are asymptomatic people in the community, they do recommend that you get tested at day five to seven, but again, it does not release you from quarantine. There are certain circumstances. Typically, it is congregate living settings, so our long-term care facilities, our correctional facilities, any type of a congregate care setting that when a person is quarantined, even if they were tested early, that they consider a test at day 12 before going back into the workplace. So you, you're a close contact in the community or in a congregate care setting, they recommend that you get tested when you're quarantined, day five to seven. That only gives you an answer of whether you're positive that day. Now, when you get close to day 14, when you could go back into the workforce, they recommend that you get tested on day 12, because if you get your test results within two days, day 14, you are negative and good to go into the community. That's as close as they can get it in that scenario. If you ended up testing positive in that and you still have no symptoms, then you are considered infectious, so then you would not be going back into the work setting. And so that's the concern about releasing too soon. There are exceptions to that, and the exceptions have to do with critical workforce. In a critical workforce situation, they may release someone day 10 into the workforce with making sure that they're following, wearing masks, they're separating from others, and not, as much as possible, not caring for the public if possible. In that case, they do recommend that they're testing again as well. And just to address some of the asymptomatic people with known COVID exposure, the following groups are considered high priority for testing, so they're an asymptomatic person with a known COVID exposure, and that would be individuals who are working or attending a K-12 or childcare center, hospitalized patients, healthcare personnel, first responders, individuals living, working, or visiting congregate care settings, individuals with medical conditions, including pregnancy, individuals 65 years of age or older, individuals who live in households with a high-risk individual or who provide care in a household with a high-risk individual, and members of a large household living in close quarters. And so, again, I want to just repeat that those are people that would be asymptomatic people with a known exposure, and there's a high consideration for having them tested. Repeat testing at the end of the quarantine period may be recommended, as I mentioned, in congregate care settings. And let's see. And again, just to clarify the difference between isolation, a person who is sick is isolated from others because they have symptoms for 10 days. If that 10-day period happens and they are continuing to have a fever, they should continue to stay home. A person who is quarantined is a person who has been exposed to someone known to have COVID, and that person is separating from others for 14 days because that is the period of time that they could potentially develop symptoms. So day one to day 14 is when they could develop those symptoms. That's why testing on day five or seven doesn't release them from that 14 days of quarantine because they could develop symptoms. And that's it.
Do you want to talk about the positive isolation? Would you want me to do that? So those that are positive, and Jamie talked about, those are the ones in isolation. So if you're positive, then you do stay home for the 10 days. At that 10-day point, if you weren't hospitalized or you're not still having a fever or other symptoms, you can return to your workplace or school. There is no recommendation to retest you. So on day 10, the virus load has diminished over those 10 days. So even if you have some symptoms still, there are times where people have lingering symptoms, and some people have lingering symptoms for months after they've had a COVID-positive case, but there is no repeat testing. The CDC says that after the 10 days, there is no transmission potential for that. So businesses and others cannot require a second test. It may be positive, but if you have lingering symptoms still, but you don't have enough to be infectious to others. So that 10-day period for positive cases is, that's the end of that. That is different than what Jamie was talking about with the quarantine. So it's confusing. We do this every day, so I understand that this can be confusing. That's why we get a lot of questions, and a lot of people have questions about the differences between quarantine, isolation, the dates, when do I get tested, when do you not recommend testing? So we're happy to field all those questions. We work through this on a regular basis. Our case investigators and contact tracers are also providing a lot of that information to the folks that they're working with.
Sorry, Kathy, I forgot that. There is information on the CDC website dated October 27th that addresses reinfection of COVID, and as you know, they're continuing to study that. But at this point, according to the CDC, if you test positive, you do not need to repeat tests for at least three months. And that is because of the fact that they know that you could possibly still test positive, but you are not infectious after that 10-day period of time.
Any other questions for us? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to take up the agenda addition, I believe.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you recall, back in July 28th, this board approved a six-category approach on how to best classify and allocate CARES funding through the Federal CARES Act. At that time, we discussed the potential, just based on the uncertainty of what we knew at the time and the needs of what we would find in our county. We may need to make adjustments to the funding categories or even the categories as a whole. Before you, this morning, we have a proposal to add a seventh category. It would be a COVID infrastructure mitigation. As the purchase, as we purchased the buildings and lease and fit-up of the DMV space, these purchases were originally included in the county infrastructure COVID compliance. We, I guess, as our committee discussed that, we want to make sure that it met the criteria of what we looked at. The county infrastructure COVID compliance, a lot of that dealt with purchasing touchless fixtures, laptops, a remote work infrastructure, and multiple office remodels to come in compliance with COVID. And so the COVID mitigation, infrastructure mitigation would include the buildings. We felt that that was different enough in as far as what that purchase meant and what the explanation of those categories were. I did provide, handout that Darren updated, that if the board were to approve this proposal today, that it would have all the seven categories. Again, we've made some adjustments to meet the different categories there. And remaining, we've spent just about, we spent all of the 100%, 100% of the allocation, we have about $130,000 remaining from our miscellaneous fund. And so, again, I think, you know, I think it's important for our citizens to understand that initially, when we made this plan, we, again, we didn't know, necessarily know what the needs were going to be. We feel, as we touched on last week, that we feel that we have well-rounded funding categories that we addressed during this process. And our challenge is, is we had from the middle of July to December 1st to spend those dollars. And so we feel that adding this category better suits the spending of those additional purchases, and so with that, I would yield for any discussion.
So, having to get more better, 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 potential. I'm going to go for it.
Any questions?
Both Commissioner Whalen and I, and Commissioner Campbell, there was never more than two of us there, just because of our alternate schedule. But yesterday, Commissioner Whalen and I were present at the CARES Act Committee meeting where we discussed this, and under the advisement of our county attorney, it appears that this is the best way to classify things that made the most sense, so I certainly support it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Are we going to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm getting real feedback in my phone here.
Commissioner Gross, by chance, do you, are you not muted? Okay.
Well, I would certainly make a motion to establish a seventh category in the Clay County's framework for the CARES Act dollars. That category would be infrastructure purchases due to COVID-19 mitigation.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny and a second by Grant to establish a seventh category in Clay County's framework for investing federal CARES Act dollars, infrastructure purchases due to COVID-19 mitigation. Any further discussion? Okay. We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye. Motion carried.
And then, just to follow that up, the next item with the addition of the seventh category, again, we would look to transfer the cost of the purchase of the building and also the lease and fit-up of the DMV at the Moorhead Center Mall. Again, if you look at the categories, that would be a total of $2,768,300. Those two items had previously had board action to allocate them into the COVID infrastructure to COVID compliance, and so we would be requesting approval to move those to the category of the new category.
So move.
Got a motion by Grant, a second by Jenny?
Just maybe, Mr. Chair, if I could. When Commissioner Campbell and I started with the CARES Act Committee in July, it was very hard to know exactly what each column would total to, and as we've said many times before at this meeting, we're continuing to evaluate the effect the pandemic has had on the county and county infrastructure, so that is exactly why we will be asking to reallocate these funds.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Now, we've got item number four, the request for approval of professional service proposal with Klein-McCarthy Architects in regards to the offet building.
Mr. Chair, if we could just step back one moment and just provide a quick update on the CARES Committee on number three?
Okay.
Maybe just turn it over to Darren.
Yeah, there's, a lot of the funds have already gone out, all the long-term care facilities and all of that, checks were sent out last week. We do have two affidavits left from our round two left to get, I talked to Mark Sloan yesterday, and he was working on getting those two affidavits. The totals for what we spent in the Phase One and Phase Two for the small businesses were $1,141,000, and for the community resiliency, $912,845. One thing that we are starting to look at with the DMV being rebuilt and then is the badges for the dealers. They're going to have their own special back door that they can come in, so we'll be giving some badges out to the dealers once the DMV is up and running. And as Steve mentioned, once all of this money is spent, we'll have about $135,000 left. We do still have a few costs that will be brought to you in the next couple meetings, but that's where we're standing right now, so.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, just to note that November 15th is the deadline. And if I could, Mr. Chair, just to note that November 15th is the deadline for our, our cities and townships to spend their funds. I did reach out again yesterday to all of our cities and townships, just to, kind of a friendly reminder that that deadline is coming. With, again, the goal, many of our, our townships have utilized the funds or have picked another agency to utilize that. Our, our goal, again, of course, is to utilize all those funds in Clay County. And so we did, if, in the event that they haven't spent that or haven't provided those to, to other agencies, they do have the building to provide that back to the county, which we would have from the, from the 16th through December 1st to spend, so.
Very good. Okay.
That's it.
Okay, so now we can take?
Yes.
Item number four?
Yep. I think, Mr. Chair. With the purchasing of, of the, the building, and while the building is certainly in excellent condition, there's going to be some, some remodeling that we will need to do to make sure it meets the various needs of our department. Klein-McCarthy has most recently worked with us on a variety of different projects, but for part of our master planning. And so they have a lot of the data and information that, that they would be beneficial, I think, to, to move this forward much more quickly. And so the request that I have before you is a proposal from, from Klein-McCarthy to provide professional service of an architect, an architect texture for the new building. We will be looking at potential fee up to $10,000 at a max, plus reimbursement expenses. We are working with, with RDO to, to try to get some drawings. If we're able to get some CAD drawings and electrical drawings, that, that figure will, will be lower than that. We did get some information this morning prior to board that I'll be forwarding, would be forwarding on to see if that would meet the criteria to lower that cost. But the request before you this morning would be to approve the professional service contract up to $10,000 with Klein-McCarthy.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant and a second by Jenny to approve a professional service proposal from Klein-McCarthy Architects for the RDO building. Any discussion?
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that brings us to item number five. We got Matt Jacobson coming up for this one. Clay County Planning Director Matt Jacobson.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, um, at the October 20th Planning Commission meeting, there was a recommendation to appoint a new Planning Commission member for the Oakport seat of the Planning Commission. Tim Brendemull has served in that position for the past nine years, and so his, his three, three-year terms are up. And so I just want to thank Tim for his service and for everything that he's done to contribute to the Clay County Planning Commission. And so at the meeting, the, there was a unanimous recommendation to appoint Kurt Sherbin to a three-year term. We had three applicants, and all were fantastic. So it was a, it was a tough decision, to say the least, but the, the Planning Commission had made that decision to appoint Kurt, or to recommend that the Board of Commissioners appoint Kurt to the, to a three-year term. So that's what I'm asking of you today.
Okay. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Grant and a second by Jenny to appoint Kurt Sherbin to the Clay County Planning Commission.
Just as a-
Any discussion?
Just as a comment, as the member of this board that served on the Planning Commission, I also want to extend my gratitude to Tim Brendemull. Tim has been a fantastic, active member of the Planning Commission and, and brings his knowledge from the township level and as a producer as well and farmer to that. So it's, it's been great to have him as part of that, and I look forward to maybe working with him in the future on any other boards, but thank you to Tim.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Larson?
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Now, we've got a, a, item number six is a request from ASA Property Management to waive penalties and interest.
Mr. Chair, I believe they're, they're, they'll be transferred in here on the phone here. Send them in here, and I'll try to not lose everybody.
Did we have a sheet on that?
Do we have everyone on still?
I'm here. I'm here.
Mr. Lee?
Lee's here, yes.
Okay. All right. I'll step in here, I guess. The, the-
I think somebody needs to mute their phone again.
Um, the Hunter Treasurer's Office received a request from ASA Property Management on October 26th. They, they did not make their payment for property tax on time. Their concern in this case was, is there's some confusion as far as their office being open and when, when the mail goes in and out. And so it did not, it was prepared according to, to our person here, and unfortunately, it didn't, it didn't get to our point. So they've accumulated about $1,990 and $95.84 in penalties, which they are requesting permission to have, have expunged.
So when was the payment due?
The 15th.
Of October?
Correct.
And when was it received?
I believe we received it on the 19th.
So, you know, if this came to his attention on the 18th, October 18th, then we have a letter to us by the 26th, that's certainly an individual that is on top, even though it was late, is certainly on top of, of the situation. And I think due to the COVID pandemic concerns, it certainly seems to fall within the, the options for us.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
We've got a, a motion to approve the request and a second, motion to approve by Grant, a second by Jenny. Any further discussion? Mr. Larson?
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Motion is approved to approve the request.
All right. Thank you.
Next on, item on the agenda is the request to execute resolutions for general tax levy for the Buffalo River Watershed District. We have some gentlemen here from the Buffalo Red River Watershed District. Hello and welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yeah, good morning. Good morning. I'll maybe start this off, and then I'm, I'm Eric Jones. I'm the district engineer for the Watershed District. And after I give a little rundown here, if Jerry or Paul have any additional comments, I'll have them give those to you. So, good morning. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come present to you. For a little more than a decade, we've been coming to you on this matter. Watershed law allows for taxation of our citizens in the four counties, Claybecker, Wilken, and Ottertail Counties by petition of a government subdivision. Clay County meets that requirement. One of the reasons we come to you is that 72.6% of taxation using this would come out of Clay County. So we felt it was important to keep you abreast of what's going on. Our levy for, our proposed levy for 2021 is very similar to what we had in 2020. We're limited in law in our administrative levy to a levy of $250,000. The state, you know, they're always evaluating that, but they haven't adjusted that for inflation since 2003. So it's capped at the 250, $250,000 level. So then the second part is these two separate levies, which are required by petition. Again, your role, if, if you're so inclined, would be to approve those resolutions. The first of those is a general administrative levy for $727,496, and that is a slight increase over last year. The levy is capped at 0.00798% of the taxable market value, and that's why there's a slight increase over last year, just simply the tax base is bigger than it was a year ago. The second levy would be the fourth year of a four-year, $500,000 commitment for the Wolverton Creek restoration. That would be a $2 million commitment from the Watershed District. That project is ongoing. Phase One was completed by Celine Brothers out of Holly this summer. Phase Two got started here in September by glating construction of La Porte, and they're making great progress. Of course, we have a little better weather conditions this year than we have the last couple, so. So we have these two, two levies, both required by petition. I did include some information regarding our expenditures, the actual costs for a landowner in the Watershed District. In 2020, the actual cost to a landowner for a $100,000 valuation was $16.60. This year, that levy would go to $18.09 per $100,000 in taxable market value. And most of that's due to a once-in-five-year levy for something we call our Survey and Data Acquisition Fund. That's something that's allowed in Watershed Law. Next year, I would expect it to go back down. Otherwise, things are pretty much operating much the way they always have. I think we're using those dollars in wise ways. We support agencies like River Keepers and Red River Basin Commission. In the packet, I did include a list of grants that we've received over the last seven or eight years. And of course, we need match for those grants, and that's part of what this money is used for. So that, that totals about $32 million in those grants, and that's both state and federal funding that's brought to the Watershed projects. And it's probably important to just point out that it isn't just the Watershed District. It includes our partners with, like, the SW, the Clay SWCD, as well as the counties, all four counties and SWCDs for that matter. And there's a lot of good work getting done. We have Stony Creek restoration that we're looking at in 2021. We have some work going on on the Ottertail River, South Branch of the Buffalo River. Whiskey Creek restoration is expected to begin next summer. A lot going on. And I don't know if Jerry or Paul, you have other things to add for the Commissioners?
I don't have a whole, not enough really to add, other than to say thank you for listening to us. I'd ask if you have any questions to us, however.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
I just want to, in regards to Resolution 2020-35, you mentioned that we're in the fourth year of four. In helping with the funding for Wolverton Creek Restoration Project, were each of those annual payments that went to that, were they all equal to that $500,000?
Commissioner Campbell, yes, that's correct. They're all $500,000.
And is this, is this a, I certainly, I certainly agree with it. I think it's a great project. But I, what portion, what portion of that project, you receive, we received some state funding for that project as well, right?
Yeah, there's over $5 million worth of grant funds that are coming in on that project through Bowser, as well as the Outdoor Heritage Fund, Lassard Sam's Outdoor Heritage Council funding. Plus, there's some funding coming in through the CRP program, Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program. It's CRP with RIM that makes it, makes perpetual easements out there along the restored channel.
Were, in addition, then, because I don't remember this, were, were there also individual property owners assessed based on benefit?
Yeah, this one in particular, we did a water management district, and so on an annual basis, people pay an average of about $1.50 per acre for the next 10 years. It'll raise about $1 million for the project.
Okay. I have no further questions, and I, I support, I want to, last year, of course, I, we had our differences, and I did not support these levy requests last year, but this year I certainly do. I think we've come a long way, I think, in, in working things out. So, Mr. Chair, I would, I would first move Resolution 2020-34.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a, a motion by Commissioner Campbell and a second by, second by Commissioner Wayland for Resolution 2020-34. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Motion carried for Resolution 2020.
I would also move Resolution 2020-35.
Okay, we have a motion by Kevin and a second by Grant for Resolution 2020-35. Any further discussion on that one?
The only point that I want to point out is, I think you really do a great-
The only point that I want to point out is I think you really do a great job of leveraging the funds that you do get in terms of the grants that you are applying for and are working with. And just since 2019, $13,902,000 worth of grants came in for these projects. And I, you know, you do a lot with a little, I guess, is maybe not the best, best way to say that, but congratulations.
Thank you.
The, you know, the credit for that really goes to Eric, or he won't say that, but he's, you know, as an engineer, does a lot of the writing of the grants, along with our partners.
Certainly.
But, yeah, I, we're pretty proud of the fact that the amount of grant money that we get to support projects.
Yeah, a lot of great projects, a lot of great partners.
Any further discussion?
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye. Well, it looks like you're batting a thousand.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Keep up the new direction and the good work.
I think we're in an era of calm.
I think we have Joe following in for this next item.
Okay. This is the request for approval to upgrade the detox laundry facility by building manager Joe Olson.
Joe, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, commissioners, are you still there?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, so are you ready for me, Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
Oh, okay, okay. So I'm, good morning, board. Mr. Chair, we, I'm coming to you today with a kind of a difficult project or situation. We've had, currently, our last leak that we had over at the detox center ended up flooding a portion, or actually flooded the laundry room over there, and then also a supply room that is back-to-back with that. And when we went ahead and started tearing out all the sheetrock and everything, we had discovered the mold that was up in these areas that was previous mold, not caused by the current leak right now. And as we started looking into it, we had to actually take out a wall that was full, full of it and stuff. So when we did that, we were left with kind of a room that was demoed out a little bit. And insurance was, it was going to be covering like new flooring and new sheetrock all around for this. And then they also did cover the mitigation of the mold itself from the old and the new, new, from the old mold that was discovered. So that's all has been covered, so. But in working with Troy and Kathy, they've had some difficulties over the years working on the laundry room that is there. And it's basically a small closet with an industrial dryer in there and a couple washers kind of smashed in there. And they've had, been forced to have kind of their laundry on the outside of the room, and it's been kind of a difficult situation to process the laundry. So while we had the room torn apart, Troy and Kathy and I met to discuss what would be a better situation there. And was determined that if they could possibly add an extra dryer into their, their laundry service, they would be able to keep ahead. It sounds like they are always falling behind. And so I came up with a plan here to do this. And since we were, had to, if you, if you look at your memo, I have a before and after, that middle wall that split bolt is what's out right now. And what I'm proposing to do is keep that open and reroute some plumbing and some electrical along the east wall of the room, creating a bigger, more, just a bigger all-around room rather than two closets that are together. So I guess for me, the WIC clinic below has always kind of had the same leak, aside from the blowouts from the sprinklers and stuff that the WIC's taken before. This has just always been an ongoing leak that leaks below. We kind of know when we see this leak what's happened. So that the laundry is leaking or something. So we've always seen the same leak, and it's my goal to, to add some plumbing in there, a drain right there, so that any leaks that do happen to go there rather than on the WIC clinic. So also above and beyond the construction costs that the insurance won't cover, I would, which is here, Delta Design is about $2,000, I was going to add that bathroom-type plastic wall around so we don't get that same mold issue that we had before. So anyways, I guess for me, I put together numbers for Troy and Kathy on this, and it's turned out we got a total project cost of $15,165. And I guess that would, I would request to move forward with this if I could. And that's what I got. Any questions?
Joe, I understand we have funds available in the Building Improvement Fund 19 to cover this. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. Actually, the oil project went real well, and, and we didn't have any extra costs or anything on that. So Fund 19 is sitting, sitting, sitting pretty good. And so this would be a, we're definitely doing well on that account. So we definitely have funds available coming out of that fund.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the request.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Motion from Grant and a second from Jenny. Any discussion?
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you, board. Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, here comes the highway department, just in time.
Good morning. I realize it's kind of unknown times right now with, as far as travel and conferences, and all of our conferences have pretty much changed to virtual. If you remember this past spring, the 2020 County Engineer Conference was canceled. We did get all of our money reimbursed back to us for the cost of the conference. The airline tickets that we did purchase, we bought insurance on them, and the insurance didn't, wasn't reimbursable because of COVID. I guess there was some small print deal of some kind. I don't know why it wasn't reimbursable. But I called the other day, and the airline voucher dollars are still there through the end of 2021. And the, the cost to attend the current 2021 conference, the, the travel would be, right now is equivalent, so it wouldn't cost the county any more to go to it. And like I said, I realize that there's a lot of things that happened in April. We have spring flooding, where in the past, we've, we've canceled all of our trips and stayed back and fought the flood. The, the current 2021 conference could also be canceled due to COVID. And there again, we would end up doing the same thing as we did in 2020. But I would like to get permission to attend the out-of-state conference. I think there's a lot of value in it. You know, I've been to a few of them, and every year, there's, there's a lot of different things you can learn. They have a lot of maintenance items. They've got a lot of engineering items. There's a lot of current legislation-type items. And there's a lot of networking, and it's, I feel like there's a lot of value to it. What I would like to do is, if I were able to get permission, Justin and I would take our airline vouchers. We would book the new flights, wouldn't cost any additional dollars. I feel like the longer we wait, flights are going to get more expensive, and then it is going to cost additional dollars. We did budget for both of us to go in 2021. If for any reason, we feel, or the board feels, that we should not attend, it's not safe to attend, or there's other things such as flooding, by all means, we'll definitely cancel like we have in the past.
Got a motion to approve the request from Grant? Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Frank? Or was it Kevin?
Frank.
Yeah.
Second by Frank? Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just, I really don't think this is an appropriate request, given the time that we're currently under, both with the pandemic and budget constraints, so I will not support this request.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
According to the memo that I have, this, this trip would occur from April 19 to the 22nd. I, I do believe that we need to be able to act in the best interest of all of our county employees in regards to a pandemic at this point in time. I think if there's something in terms of registration that allows a, a better rate to do it right now, I think it's appropriate. But we better, we better be ready, depending on the conditions at the time, to rescind this particular motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, this weather would have been nice to be able to finish a project.
Absolutely.
You know, I know I've asked you before in terms of that county aid project, there's, there's no way we have any ability to work with liquidated damages.
Due to the, the change of the scope, we're pretty much out of our hands. The material underneath there was supposed to be just ground up and paved on top. And when it, when it changed to this extent that it did, pretty much changed the, the whole scope of things. We were really, really hoping to get them back this week, and we tried. I, I made several reaches out to them, and I think I shared some of the information with you. And it, it's a, it is a big deal for them to move the plant, and they would have done that. The scary part would be is if they would have moved that plant, and then they would have had breakdowns. And if the, if and when the weather does get cold, then all of a sudden, they have to worry about that vast quantity of oil. And I think that was one of the big deals for them, is that, that risk factor. If we'd had several weeks of this, I think they would have done that, or I feel they would have done it. And I read, you know, I even mentioned if we could even just get the base layer done on the whole project, maybe not the top layer as well, which would have taken more. But it just wasn't going to happen. And like I said, as far as putting anything back on them with liquidated damages and those sort of things, there's a lot of leeway on their end based to the, due to the change of the project and the conditions out there.
So because there is so much leeway, and if they're not going to pave when it's 68 and 70 degrees as it is right now, I mean, it's not even getting below freezing at night.
Right.
When do we expect that road to get done? It's not going to happen until June then.
As soon as the road restrictions come off, is typically when they start moving equipment, like their plants and...
But they're going to be making, bidding on other projects as a company.
But typically, I guess, they, they wrap things up. If, if they bid other projects and don't come to ours first, then they will be into liquidated damages.
I, agreed. I mean, this is, it's ridiculous, quite frankly. I mean, that, I mean, I understand that you move at a badge plant and whatever, but then we should be able to say, well, if you're not going to take a six-day stretch of, of above-freezing weather, we have the ability to get out of that contract and have another company come in.
I think part of it was, I don't know for sure, but they were still working on that job in Thief River, so their, their plant is still actively working, or at least it was last week, according to Zima.
Then I think then maybe we should take into account on when we do bid, bid openings and awardal of contracts, how many jobs a company is doing. Because clearly, this company overbid what their capacity was. And so now, I mean, now we have a public safety concern that we're going to have to deal with all winter long. If we get through that without an accident, we'll be incredibly lucky.
Right. It's going to be a lot of work, guaranteed. Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. Commissioner Mojo, do you want to start?
Sure, thank you. Last Wednesday, I attended AMC, had a virtual meeting on the CARES Act issues that are going on statewide. As I, I probably won't report on that, since most of you were at the AMC Fall Meeting, and I think you heard what each, what each county is doing. I attended the AMC Fall District Meeting virtually, and I appreciate all the attendance from all the different counties. One thing remains quite clear, that everyone's scrambling to address the concerns of the pandemic within their counties. And I, I think Clay County has gone far, far beyond what we even expected we were able to do. So kudos to all of our staff for making that happen. Yesterday, I attended the CARES Act, the Clay County CARES Act Committee, and I believe we've addressed what we covered at that meeting. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Whalen?
Yes, also attended virtually the AMC District Meeting, and it was interesting the updates from the counties. Let's see, I had Prairie Lakes Meeting. Most of the discussion in the Prairie Lakes Meeting was concerning the insurance, ongoing insurance issue. And a letter is being sent to MCIT to try and get them to commit to some position on this. So there's a lot of concern about this. Ottertail County is real upset about it, to the point where they're talking about, and talking to other counties about withdrawing from MCIT. So I'm sure there'll be more coming on that. I had an EDC Executive Committee Meeting, and mainly discussions about the pandemic and what effect that's having on the EDC, and what next year holds for the EDC. And I had the CARES Meeting, and we've already discussed that. So that was it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, do you have a report?
I was unable to attend any meetings this week.
Okay, that's understandable. Commissioner Gross, do you have a report? Commissioner Gross, are you there?
He must have been. I do know that he did attend some meetings, because I was in, he was in the district meeting with us, but he can maybe give a report next time.
Okay, well, I had the Friday virtual AMC Meeting that I attended as well, and it's already been reported on. Mr. Larson, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, a few things. Mr. Chair, last Tuesday, I did, Colleen and I have been working with Commissioner Haney and Commissioner Whalen's term coming up at the end. Today, we'll have two new commissioners that will be appointed next year. And we're working on a new commissioner training book that will go, hopefully, with our AMC training for new commissioners, to help that transition into, into the role. On the 28th, I toured the RDO building, the building that we purchased with Tim, Tim Dent, Mark Sloan, and Darren. We also had a second group of the Land Records staff, and Colleen also attended, just to, to kind of look through there, through the, the building. I did meet with a representative from RDO and established a, we're working on a memorandum of understanding to ensure what stays with the building at the sale. We are also working with them to, as I mentioned earlier, to get some of the drawings from, from the building. On the 28th afternoon, we met, we met as a group and just kind of reached out and had a conversation about, about the building. We also talked, made some initial phone calls to Scott Fettig from Construction Engine, or excuse me, from Klein McCarthy, and also spoke with the construction engineers. We're going to be having a building committee this Thursday to talk about, talk about some of those things with, with the board's approval today of the contract with Klein McCarthy. Just to kind of give a quick update, we did, we did talk to JT Lawn Service. They also have the contract for the school. And so it did not appear that it would be an issue for them to pick up that, that as part of our contract that we have with them. Also reached out to MCIT as far as getting insurance on the new building and the rental space at the Moritz Center Mall. The 29th, I met with, with Brian Melton and Shelley, Shelley Jeffers, and a number of other court staff, and discussed the availability of boardrooms on some of their needs for jury, juror space. We'll have some further discussions with them. County management gave me touch on CARES, the budget building. Also, it's, Kathy mentioned work schedules, adjusting schedules, remote work, that type of thing. On the 29th, we also participated as department head group with Don Durasovich from MCIT on the 10 Essentials of Risk Management, and making sure that all of our, all of our property are correctly listed on the schedules to ensure coverage. On the 29th, I met with Lauren, Lori, and then also with Darren on some county-related issues. On Friday, I participated in the District Four AMC Meeting that has been, has been covered. On Friday, I participated in the District 4 AMC meeting that has been, has been covered. Again, they addressed our annual, our, our annual conference has been canceled, but we are going to have the meeting on December 7th. That will be from 1 to 4. Registration is not out yet, but we'll make sure that the commissioners are, are registered along with, with our other representatives, voting members. And then they did note that the spring meeting will be June 18th, hopefully in Fergus. New Commissioner School is still under consideration based on our COVID situation. Yesterday, we participated in the Corona Relief Committee that's been addressed already, and yesterday afternoon, Brian and I met, met again on a series of issues, and also met with Kirk and Darren on a, on a solution for a shared position with relocation. Just a reminder, the Clay County Association of Townships official meeting has been canceled. I did provide them an update with some of the issues that are happening within our departments. I believe Sheriff empty, and also Kathy McKay provided their individual department's updates. See, and then I think, just a note, that Buffalo Red was here this morning, they were notified that their one watershed, one, one watershed, one plan was approved by Bowser this past week, so congratulations to all the work on, on that. We have Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner, or excuse me, Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Mojo a part of that. And then just a reminder, today we have voting until 8:00 PM. Again, make sure that you look for your correct polling stations. You can go to our website to find the link, both for the county and the city of Moritz. That concludes my report.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Haney, it's Gross. Still operator here. The only meeting I had was District 4 and at the Red Administration, talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Mr. Melton, anything for you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Melton.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Well, then, we are adjourned.